I'd like to call this meeting of the Town and District Planning Board to order. Our first order of business is the posted meeting agenda, I believe stands as printed. And I'd like to have a motion to approve, James.
No move.
Second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Okay, here we just approve the grant here for everybody.
Aye.
Let me see, I do not have any correspondence or announcements. Does anyone have any correspondence or announcements? Okay, we have a few minutes before our first public hearing.
I'm saying.
Okay. Only if we do it in rounds.
If you're talking about him, no.
Oh. Well, I don't know what it is, I think we probably could. Well, I know for the sole and application, would you like to just present now that you'll have to sit through everything later?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, I mean I can sit and watch anyway.
If you could come up to the microphone and just tell the planning board what it is that you'd like to do.
Okay. I guess you all have my, the packets that I handed out.
And your handoff on the screen.
Oh. Oh, good. All right, so we have a little barn on our property right now. It's right, very, very close to the road, it's about 15 feet from the road. And there's a lot of traffic comes down my road actually. And we want to redo it, but we thought that rather than just tearing it down and rebuilding it where it is, we wanted to move it in a little bit into the envelope of the land, which is...
Sorry, until zooming in.
Okay. I'll zoom over here. So this is where the barn is now, here. And I just tilted it this way, moved it a little bit farther in from the property line, this is one property line, and in from the road so that it's... But we couldn't go much farther in because there's an electric water line underground, you know, here, so that we pushed it that way. And then we thought while we're at it, we might as well put in a bedroom and a bathroom and turn it into a guest cottage, because we, our house is just two bedrooms, you know. And it will basically be the same shape, the same size, we're proposing since we're, by code, I think, allowed 900 square feet, and the barn currently is 20 by 40, so it's 800 square feet, so we're proposing that we add five feet onto the length. And we'll keep the look of the barn very similar to what's there now. Melody, you suggested that at one point, you know, keep the front door and the little windows as they are now, but, you know, so it'll be very similar, but it'll be tilted slightly away from the road. And we've put in, we use the existing driveway, but just put in some, a little gravel parking area for two cars. Are there any other questions? I mean, it's pretty simple, pretty straightforward.
Any questions?
Yes.
Will this be slab on grade?
Yes. Yeah, it might be up a little bit, but it's very flat right there. It's slab, you know, no... Our main house has heated slab floors, but this won't be, this would just be like in the, we would just have heaters like this, you know, that you have here. Basically, it's for the summer, summer use mostly.
Any questions?
Again, if you have any questions, you are going to the ZBA for some setback, various variances. Just wanted to ask, it did look like, I mean, it might be tight, I didn't under it out, but the possibility of this new structure, new structure being located back toward the back of the property, so we'll repair the variances, kind of in the upper corner, but I do realize that the topography is a bit steeper there and there's a wall there, but did you look at that as an option, or you want to keep it generally where the new structure is?
Well, we've got, right now, the house is at its minimum, 50 feet from the back property line, so we couldn't go back there. And over here, we'd still be very close to the property line and the well, and then there's, there's a stream down here, so there weren't really any options. And originally, we thought we were just rebuilding the existing barn, but I guess that's sort of out of the equation now anyway, isn't it? It's just really a question of where we place it.
It's out of the equation because it was not salvageable?
No, because I don't think that affects our, the permissions. I mean, would it if we built it in the exact same location?
I'm talking about why the, why the original building is not being salvaged instead of being rebuilt.
Well, it's just, it has no foundation, you know, there's old wooden beams, it's really ratty, it has holes in it. I mean, we could, we could certainly just, but we'd have to knock it down and build it, because it's really in such bad condition.
Right. Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but it doesn't look like there's any place on the property that you could put it to where it's behind, to where it's farther from the roads than the existing house.
No.
It'd be tight, I was looking at the back corners, possibility, but with the well there.
But the road curves around, so that still puts it closer to the road than the existing...
Potentially.
Than the...
Yeah, I don't think there's much else.
So that wouldn't, that wouldn't avoid a variance for that?
Probably not.
Okay.
What, if we put it up here?
Yeah. It's still closer, it's still closer to Way Road than you, than the main house is.
Well, this is Way Road here.
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, we would still be closer.
So it wouldn't include a variance in that regard, putting it anywhere else on the property.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Oh, can I have a motion?
Is the barn by any chance on any historic registry as an old barn?
We didn't find it.
I've forgotten how old, I've seen the barn multiple times, but I just don't know how old it is.
Do you know the age of it?
I don't, but I don't think it's that old.
We didn't find anything to that exactly.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
Dave runs, sold apples out there. That's because, if you heard of Dave runs, I guess he sold his apples out of there? That's all I know.
Yeah, there was a little barn there at one time, it went to the ground.
Yeah.
Maybe six or seven...
Oh, yeah, just to the, alongside, I think it was built there.
But relative to that, the conversation that Dee referred to earlier, you know, we asked her to consider doing the fenestration and the location of the doors and windows on that elevation to be similar to what was there, you know, as a nod to what it looked like historically, whether it's historic or not.
Just concerned that there was an exposure there, it's not, okay.
Are what we're looking at now, is that the proposed elevation?
Pardon? Yes.
What we're looking at now, that's the proposed elevation?
Oh, yes.
Okay. And the dark colors match the house?
Yes, yeah, it would be black, with a black roof, a dark gray.
Okay, then. All right, here we go. Town and District Planning Board, here it asks as follows, on the application by Dee Mendero, sole, precise plan approved on special use program in Town Code Chapter 125 at 111 Way Road within the RC5 of Countryside Zoning District. Accepts the application's supporting documents as adequate for initiating review by the planning board's advisors in public. Classifieds to the post action is a tiny 200 seater for which coordinated environmental audit review is precluded. Schedules of public hearing on the application for...
115. Uh-huh. 6:45.
Okay, 6:45. And directs the group to undertake the otherwise odd noticing, posting reports of decline set forth from the Town Code Chapter 125. Delegates Planning Board members?
I'll turn you.
Woody and Edna. Thank you. To the Dr. Field visit for the project side report, the office pages for time of the public hearing, we post the Town Code Chapter 9 Conservation Advisory Board, refers the application to the Conservation Advisory Board for review and written comment concerning environmental factors. In accordance with the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development 239 Planning Zone Referral, refers the application to the Department of Planning and Development and Authorizes without prejudice to information and comments while you present at the public hearing from their rise based on both the above cited field visit and referrals. Separation of work leave drafted and approved resolution for the planning board's consideration on July 15th or as may be later timing. Any other motion to approve?
Aye.
Second?
Aye.
Any discussion? Call in favor.
Aye.
Very good. Any questions about the noticing, she'll take care of it.
What about demolition permit?
Ah, interesting. That may, that may be part of the approval, the special use permit, if we get a demolition Good point.
Should I submit one?
Go down to town to Gretchen about that.
Gretchen's right here.
Don't talk to her about it now, she doesn't know now.
Yeah, I think we'll talk.
Yeah, oh, Dr. Demolition, it is required. I think it can be done though, after we get the approval for the special use permit in sight time, unless you want to take it down soon.
No.
Which we certainly do.
Yeah, no, no rush.
Okay. Well, you're all set.
Okay.
And then Gretchen will fill you in on noticing and all that stuff.
Okay.
All right, very good.
The 7724 is the number to get a hold of?
5323524.
Okay, I just wanted to...
Okay, our first public hearing, Rockledge, 492 Agar Cook Road, Site Plan Approval, Special Use Program, Wetlands Permit. And Edna is recusing herself, and you will be joining the audience.
Could you zoom in just a little bit? Good evening, Mark Lovinsky, representing Rockledge. Basically, here to just provide the board with an update in status of the approval process. And so, as you know, the applicant made application to the, starting first, the applicant made application to the zoning board of appeals with regard to transfer of units for, for the adaptive reuse of these two structures here, the manor house and the stone barn. And so, the application to the ZBA was to put two units, two common units in the stone barn, and have a total of six in the, in the manor house. Just a, just a quick recap of that, you know, two lots were created, two conforming lots were created to allow four units in each one of the lots for, under the adaptive reuse section approach. And so, the applicant felt that it was a more, it was a better fit to have, to just have two units in the piece closer to Agar Cook Road than the stone barn, and then have, instead of four, have six located in the manor house. So that application was made to the ZBA, public hearing was open and closed, and we are awaiting a decision. ZBA meets, I believe, this week, on this Wednesday, so awaiting a decision on that. Secondly, I know previous application, the traffic, amended traffic report was submitted to the board, so that's, that stands. Also, have been in touch with the hydrogeologist, anticipate they will begin next week with, prepared some initial plans for citing of additional wealth or water, additional water supply on the project, so that's, that's going to start next, next week on the, on the property. Next item is, I have completed the final drainage analysis for the project. Those documents would be, are going to be available for the town by the end of this week. I'll print it in and I will provide a copy to the planning board and also to the, to the town engineer to begin his review of those documents. And then, finally, the plans now show, obviously, since the drainage has been done, regrading for the entire site with stormwater management areas for various locations on the property. And it also includes design work relative to the, you know, stormwater collection system, and in this case, also the sanitary sewer. Now, the entire site is served by gravity sewer, and that design is, a preliminary design is complete, and we're also coordinating with the consultant who has been retained for review and evaluation of the existing wastewater treatment plant. I also anticipate that report to be complete by the end of the week, available for the board probably sometime next week. With that, we need to also coordinate a couple items, with the Duchess County Department out in that regard, with regard to a revised flow confirmation letter. That revised flow confirmation letter was, I held off on that. That was discussed at the last public hearing regarding, you know, the change. The previous flow confirmation letter was when it was the, there were suites in the manor house, so the flow has changed in that regard, but now with the additional condominium units, it's actually increased, a minor increase, I think it was 660 gallons, it increased. And then also, it includes the estimates that we provided and on irrigation for the site, and that is also discussed at the, at the last, last public hearing, when the landscape architect is also available for discussion. So it's just, once I said, once again, it's just a update where we stand, and would like to have the public hearing continue, you know. I think best to continue and I can, you know, procedurally, I just look to you, the best way to do that, and we're ready to come back with some more, you know, detailed information for the board.
Yeah, our next meeting is July 2nd.
I think it would happen, would want to extend, when's the next meeting?
August 5th?
Yeah, I think August 5th.
Questions from right from the board? Questions from the public? Yes.
At the last meeting, your landscape architect...
Here, we'll need a more glass.
Gary Latman, neighbor of Rockledge. At the last meeting, the landscape architect committed to provide written answers to a series of questions that were contained in a letter. What's the status of that from this month?
I just, I spoke to the landscape architect, that will be forthcoming this week also.
Any questions?
Speaking on the Capitol, several residents of Agar Cook Road were present here tonight. I have just some clarifications procedurally with respect to the ZBA to make sure I understand what's going on. He's expecting a decision in accord to the documents submitted by Mr. Rothenhausen, that no ZBA decision can be made till a lead agency makes its final determination of significance. So I don't believe that any decision will be made by the ZBA on Wednesday. Also, it's my understanding that the public hearing, it was continued at the last meeting until Wednesday, at which point the, it is the intent of the ZBA to close the public hearing on Wednesday without making any decision. Meaning that if there are any significant changes to the plan that was in front of the planning board that would affect the variances, then they would have to go back to the, to the ZBA. I'm wrong, maybe Mr. Lyons or one of the other attorneys could correct me, but I, that's my understanding at this moment, from, based on the information that I have. I sent an email late this afternoon, a letter that I had that articulates some of the concerns in a more cognitive fashion of the residents of Agar Cook Road. I don't know if Gretchen got a chance to print them out. I have copies here for everyone, if I can hand them out to, to everyone, if that's okay?
Sure, yes.
I, um, thank you. So, to sum up the residents' concerns, what we're looking at here within the project is basically, right now, a bifurcated project. What you have is the non-toxic half of the project, which represents the new construction, and the toxic half, which is kind of the historical preservation, adaptive reuse part of the project. It would also seem that as we're proceeding, in light of the fact that the recommendation was apparently given to the ZBA, that the board has already made up its mind with respect to granting the special use permit on what's now Lot 3, which is for the 28 residential Articulating the concerns that we have is, why are we granting the special use permit? Why do we have these subdivisions? And why are we treating it as an, as a right application? The special use permit is based on merits and circumstances. With the historic preservation part of it severed wholly from the new residential development, wherein lies the merits for the project to be given that density bonus? On a conventional subdivision, the remaining 65 acres after that the wetlands and everything are subtracted out is detailed in their full environmental assessment form, would allow for 13 residential units by conventional subdivision. If we did clustering, maybe we could get 17 or 18 units on that property. We've jumped now into the realm of a special use permit, a special use of multifamily housing, into 28 units, and we're proceeding as if it's an as-of-right application from the perspective of the residents at this point in time. That, hey, we're, they're getting 28 units, it's a special use permit, and the question is, why are they getting 28 units? Mr. Conway has 50 acres, can he then come in and apply for a special use permit, subdividing his property into 10, 5 acre lots and put 40 dwelling units on his property because he wants to? It would maximize his profit. We stepped away from a merit, what is the merit and circumstance warranting this special use permit for this property when he can put 18 units on the property or 17 units on the property? No different than if Mr. Conway came and asked for a special use permit, on what basis would you deny his permit? Once this blockade is open, I don't know that it can be closed, so that's, that's a question, I don't expect an answer right now. I'm raising the questions on behalf of my clients. Secondly, as we look to the historic aspects of the project, and I have detailed and provided code and regulations in support of some of these positions in my letter, and I hope you read it for a brief moment before using the papers for your puppy, that the historic part of it is based on, by the historic preservation and historic certification, as being an estate. And it relates to the historic districts and recognitions that Ryne Beck has as part of the estate with vast open expanses. And in their certification, their Part 1 certification, it says that these are significant structures related to the expansive estate property that it is. There's also the estate's district recognition that Ryne Beck gets. So the question that's arisen as part of the application is, is that convoluted gerrymandering property line appropriate, and does it maintain, when it's subdivided as such, the historic significance as a contributing resource, as they've indicated in their EIA? The other issue I have is the traffic impact study, still, in my opinion, is woefully inadequate. The traffic study references only the PM peak hour impacts. I posit that that is not near as important as the AM peak hours, when you have all of the joggers, school kids, school buses, pedestrian traffic, equestrian traffic, people walking their dogs, moms with strollers on that road. It is completely and totally void of any mention of the PM peak hours. Conversely, they want to compare in their traffic study to show that the minimum impacts, a two-hour time period, Monday through Friday, and not the total impact based on the AM peak hours, the PM peak hours, what would happen in between if we added 108 bedrooms, what would the impact be of maybe 72 to 100 cars, if you have two cars per household, and then eventually you have a teenage child with their own, with their own car for a short period of time? What are those impacts during the day? You also have refuse removal, FedEx, UPS, mail, truck deliveries, all of the activities associated with a development that size that have been omitted from the traffic study. I think that the traffic study needs to include the total impact from morning till night in order to be complete, not merely the PM peak hours that it, that it describes. The, the cars, you know, pick a number, you know, you have 108 bedrooms, 7, you know, 36 units, could be 72 cars, could be 36 cars, but it's certainly not zero. And I think that the applicant owes it to the neighbors to define, to describe and define those impacts that the total traffic will have on the roadway. The road is a narrow, winding, rolling road, shoulders are little to nonexistent. If two trucks are passing and there's a pedestrian, is that safe? Something for someone above my pay grade to figure out, but at first, plus, you would think that there would be, the shared roadway is a little bit narrow for that. But also, that's an issue that I think really needs to be looked at and fully vetted. At this point, I don't think it has been. I've also, warning everybody here, I've tried to make it as concise as possible and yet raise the issues for, for the clients, is that I don't see any mention of the impact of any children on the school district, which is typically part of the secret process. We've gone from, the original application was a country inn and part-time homes, we've now morphed into full-time, 36, full-time residences, which could have X number of children. I'm sure my clients would like it to be a zillion, and I'm sure that the applicant would like it to be zero, but it's somewhere in between, and I think those impacts, if you increase the, the school population by 6%, I think that, that needs to be addressed under secret. The, the last area that I'll address publicly and outside of what I've written, is that I think that this project and the density that's being proposed runs afoul of the town's comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan did a rather exhaustive and thorough build-out back in 2007, 2008. 2009, comprehensive plan was adopted, and subsequent to that, the town board adopted 2009, the comprehensive plan was adopted, and subsequent to that, the town board adopted, enabling the legislation to change the zoning to prevent the sprawl and unmitigated growth in the town. State's recommended population density for a rural community is 150 people per square mile. The town's comprehensive plan, when they created the zoning district that this property is now in, the RC 5 district, other properties that were in the 1A and 3A district were folded into the RC 5 district. Other districts, some 3-acre parcels were morphed into the 10-acre parcels, other districts were upgraded into 20-acre parcels. But when the town redid their comprehensive plan, none of the residential districts were shrunk in size. All were enlarged to prevent growth, sprawl, traffic congestion, and maintain the town's rural character and reach that 150 person per square mile density recommendation that is set forward by New York State. So, what we wind up here with on Lot Number 3, which is now a standalone lot as proposed, Lot Number 1 is the manor house, that's a standalone lot as proposed, that's up for variance. And Lot Number 2 is a standalone lot that is not up for any variances. The density that results, the net density, using the town's calculations based on what's been provided by the applicant in their EIA, nets out 28 units on 65 acres, is about 2.3 acres only. Less than half of what the town code anticipated in the town's master plan. For that reason, I think the board needs to take a hard look at the special use permit and whether such a density is in conformance with the town's master plan and the intent and purposes of the RC 5 district. Our opinion, my client's opinion, is that it runs afoul of the town's comprehensive plan. It shouldn't be treated as an as-of-right application just because the math works, and you can draw some squiggly lines on a map and make it work. And, you know, to their credit, the applicant, through their squiggly lines, has taken full advantage of the zoning code by drawing the lines to maximize the density, maximize the profitability of the new build residential, and potentially divest itself of the two historic lots and do nothing with them other than transfer whatever rights, development rights might be there, or alienate the properties completely. So, thank you very kindly for your time and attention.
Thank you. Anyone else in the seat who'd love to speak?
Yes.
We've had, we've had in front of the planning board over the years, attorneys come up and say they've represented the people on X Street, but we never know how many they are. Is it 100? Is it one? I have no idea. And I think there's something that we should understand, is he representing eight persons on the road, all the people on the road, or a fraction of them? And I don't understand what that number is.
If you'd like, I would provide the town a list of names and telephone numbers.
It's not just you that I'm concerned about, but...
If that's what you would like, I would gladly oblige.
That would be helpful.
Could you give us an approximate number?
Very often with that situation is where we have people representing a group without knowing how many in the group, and we've got people...
I fully understand. I have no objection to providing that information.
That would be very helpful, thank you.
Do you have an approximate number of clients?
Uh, I would, off the top of my head, without going back to my email list, I would say somewhere around a dozen to 16.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Let me, can I clarify that, please?
Absolutely.
Some of those persons may be multiple persons in one household, so I will also separate it out by household, so it may only be eight addresses. So, I don't want to mislead the board in any way, shape, or form to aggrandize what I'm doing. You know, it's resident, I will give the number of residences as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public, if anything else they'd like to say in the seat? Anyone on the board, if anything else they'd like to ask or contribute? Okay, what we're gonna do is continue the public hearing until August 5th, at probably...
2:47.
7:00. Okay. Could I motion to continue this public hearing to August 5th at 7:00 p.m.?
Remove it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. We'll see you again in August.
Thank you.
Okay, for our next public hearing, TPH2 Management LLC, Teakort LLC, Brindle Valley LLC, Ferncliff Nursing Home, C.R.
Actually, since there may be people there that haven't gone through, maybe go through, start with my sheets and then we can... Okay. Yeah, if you could maybe zoom in a little bit, Jim?
Yeah.
Good evening. Mark Kravinsky, I'm here representing actually four applicants. And the four applicants are located on the west side of River Road, and there's, is there a, in the upper left, Jim, is there a location map on this? I don't think so. I think, no, it's on the front cover sheet. The four, the four properties are joined, and they are defined as T-Cort LLC, which is this piece right here, and it goes a little bit further to the north. KPH2, which is Astor Courts, which is this property right here. Brindle Valley LLC, which is located right here, goes around like this, and comes down along through here. They all have funneled along the River Road. And then finally, Ferncliff Nursing Home, which is located right here. And so, the purpose of this application and, you know, introduction of this master plan, obviously, it's been already presented to the board, but this is for the public, is a combination of improvements that are going to occur on these four properties. And so, I'll start with, you know, one of the properties, which has been subject to a previous master plan approval, and also multiple applications where improvements were made, and that's the Astor Courts property. So, once again, that's this piece here. And so, in this, in this master plan application, have detailed the improvements that were made, or, excuse me, not necessarily made, but they were, applications that were made and were approved on the Astor Courts property. And I'll start, I'll start from the, from the river, you know, work east. There was, you know, initial application for, Astor's Powerhouse is located right here. So, that was part of the original master plan application, was needed to, time of Lineback planning board, for actually rehabilitation of that powerhouse. It was in disrepair, the roof was falling in, so the roof was removed, all the basements was re-coited and stabilized, and then a new roof is under construction right now, it's almost complete, through, that was an application that was approved by the planning board, and it is, it's underway. There's also a pending application for work out in the, in the river, with the attempt to rebuild and restore Astor's original boathouse. There's been, that's, applications have been made to multiple agencies, the New York State DEC, the Department of State, the Army Corps of Engineers, OGS, in order to, in order to restore the boathouse and the dock that was located there. That's ongoing. I was actually part of a meeting a few weeks ago with discussion with all those agencies. And so, you know, some, you know, there's some discussion items and possibly some modifications to the, to the original application on there. There's also been application, you know, once again, moving east, you know, for construction of an outdoor pool on Astor Courts property. There is also, you know, a ongoing, not necessarily application to the board, but ongoing rehabilitation of the existing tennis court, which is located here. There was approval for a new play yard and garden area located here on the, on the west side of the building. Same thing with the rooftop, just a rooftop deck here on the, on the main structure on the Astor Courts building. And then, utility work that was associated with it, some geothermal wells are proposed, and we'll start, hopefully start this installation in the next month or two. And mentioning the geothermal, there was also solar panels that were applied for and approved by the planning board on Astor Courts, along with a new entry court, parking area, and formal gardens in front of the property. Also associated with that, you know, I mentioned the geothermal and the solar, there was a plan that was submitted and approved by the board for, you know, basically consolidation of the underground utilities here, and taking the overhead power, and it's shown by this dash line through here, and removing any of the overhead power and now including it as underground, underground utilities, and upgrading the power capacity for Astor Courts. You know, all this work that has been, also, I mentioned, there was, part of the original application for Astor Courts was a miniature, you know, rebuilding and restoration of Astor's miniature railroad. So, there is a, the original application had a, had a loop through here and utilizing this area on Astor Courts. All this work was done, you know, with original discussion and approval by the master plan, and then, as I mentioned before, subsequent applications to the planning board. It required, you know, habitat study, archaeological work, there has been delineation in respectively wetlands and stream, that, there's a stream that traverses through the property through here, respectful of all the natural features of the property. So, once this original, you know, this original master plan application occurred, there was purchase of adjoining properties. So, there was purchase of, this is the teahouse, and so there was purchase of this property that, this, you know, by a different owner, and this is, once again, it's a little bit of an odd configuration, starting here, goes around, comes back, loops back on itself through here, and it actually goes out and includes frontage on River Road through here. It was, it's all part of the teahouse property. The same thing purchased by another agency, it was formerly owned by Susan Poth, and it's now under the ownership of Brindle Valley LLC. It's located through here. And so, the, this current application includes those three properties. And I've also put Ferncliff in here, and the only, the only thing for Ferncliff is that it would be, there's an existing overhead utility line that services Ferncliff. And so, the only proposal as part of this master plan is to bury that, is to remove those overhead utility walls and put everything underground. So, that's the only component of that's related to Ferncliff. So, this is a, this is a plan that provides, you know, improvement to all three of these properties. So, tonight's meeting is to introduce this master plan to the, you know, to the neighbors and to the rest of the public, along with, you know, taking any other questions and any comments from the planning board. So, I think, you know, I did an overall discussion. Howard Williams is also here this evening, he's with Hollander Associates, and I think he can provide, you know, detail to the improvements relative to actually all three of the properties. So, maybe, Jim, if you could pull up Howard's plan, and I'll let you take over.
Mark, quick question.
Sure.
Two things. What is the pond? It was there, then it was gone, it was there, then it was gone. It's gone now?
So, it's gone now. It's gone temporarily. So, the initial master plan had a pond there. So, I listened to some of the comments from the board to do some, you know, detailed engineering analysis relative to that, to that pond, you know, some hydrogeologic work to, you know, to determine its sustainability and, you know, potential impacts, because it's also, the, you know, it's fed, that area, there's a stream, this meandering stream there, is fed by runoff from adjoining properties, but it's also fed by the, it's the outfall from the Ferncliff wastewater treatment facility. So, wanted to also take that into account. And then, it's, I've witnessed that it's, it's subject to flooding also, any severe storm events, floods through there. So, since it requires some, you know, analysis and, you know, fieldwork that I thought was necessary to accomplish that, we're just taking that, we're setting it aside right now. I think the applicant would still like to eventually go forward with it, but it's just, it's just set aside at this time.
Okay. The other question was about the boathouse, the access to the boathouse. Is that part of that application process you've gone through, or is that separate?
No, the access is a part of it. So, there's been, I mean, it's, quite a bit of work's been done, so there's been extensive discussion with CSX, the ownership of the land between Astor Courts, both, you know, it's the railroad.
Right.
And so, there is, you know, a plan for a pedestrian bridge to cross above the tracks, and then, and it's, and its landing area on the west side of the railroad tracks is under, it's actually a plan that I prepared for acquisition of land from the state of New York. Both, you know, Astor, Astor already had a land grant on a portion of it, and there are various types of land grants. It's, you know, some requiring conversion to a different grant. But anyway, an application's been made to OGS, which appears favorable for obtaining ownership for a landing place for access, and, you know, from, from the east side of the, east side of the tracks, and for, you know, installation of, you know, some type of, you know, a platform and access to the river. So...
So, it's not really a boathouse, it's just a land?
Well, that's under consideration right now. So, the original application is for a boathouse, and so, we're just taking some feedback from the, all the agencies I mentioned. And so... And so there may be some modification of that application, but there will be, there will be some type of access to the river.
And is that the original launch still part of this whole thing? Or is that just a side thing that's got nothing to do with it?
You know, it's, it's under consideration.
Okay. I think we can say that the, the launch is.
It's, it's under restoration right now.
The font?
Okay.
It's under restoration.
Oh, the boat?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought, I thought you meant the launch.
The launching, no, no, the boat itself.
Oh, yeah.
It's over forty percent complete.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. I think you heard from Mark's description, the overall intent of what we're trying to do in merging these three properties together. You know, since the purchase of these, these properties, it became a very different project for us. We're really trying to, to take advantage of as much restoration opportunities as we can, taking advantage of views from one property to the other as they're gradually conceived as one single property. So we're, we're moving trees, I'm going to remove a certain number of trees, reshape the earth a little bit too, to accomplish this. The idea is, is to bring this as close to Astor's original state as originally intended. And that said, there are also a number of improvements to be made. You know, Astor's estate is well over a hundred years old. We want to make this really functional for contemporary use and in particular ways in which our client wishes to use it. So just to walk you through quickly, as quickly as I can, the many different components, because we are touching pieces of land all over this property. There's very little of it that is contiguous, but they're vast areas when they were. It's, it's small pieces here, it's small pieces there, but it covers all three properties. So coming off of River Road, first thing that you would find is a U gate just off of the existing driveway to Astor Court's, which we set off about seventy-five feet from the road. From that, removed from the Brindle Burke property, the driveways that currently run out across the south side of the existing pond and have rather course cycle lines along River Road, have those driveways then just come off of the existing Astor Court's driveway way inside of that gate and they would come down north of the pond to the front door of the house. A smaller driveway would then come across the front of the property to access the rear of the existing waterways. Other than a few little garden works and just cleaning up some planting, really no other proposals for the front of the Brindle Burke property. The rest of the driveway along Astor Court's, also very little to be done there other than just cleaning up and perhaps put in a little bit of planting to screen Ferncliff building. At this point, things begin to change for us. The current driveway does run across, through the woods and across the grass fields in this area. With the purchase of the tee house property, we now also have access off River Road on Tee House Lane, which will be being used for this particular building. No changes really expected along here, again, other than just doing a little landscape cleaning up. We did, in the last hearing with you, we did ask to, because we had proposed to remove some of the screening, which is between the two properties along this property line, quite feels like fifty-two cover green trees. We asked that we could move them, you know, in, you know, in the month of May and July to take advantage of the spring transplanting season, which is not to grant us that. Those trees have all been removed. They are moved to areas along this property line with screening the front portions from all these along the driveways. The other changes around, so I guess, could you jump to the next plan, which shows the tee house a little larger? So the existing tee house is building here. So the history of it, Vincent Astor did build this portion of the tee house. It's in the nominal center and had two little wings to it. Subsequent owners built in front of it and on, as well as a pool and a building. Currently, all parking is between the swimming pool and the house. For us and for our, our clients, a rather awkward relationship of house and pool. We're proposing removing that parking from this area in front of the house and moving it off to the north away from that access between the two, creating a garden then. Other changes around the house are really just to expand some terraces in the back, fire pit off on this side, a little bit more just planting and screening around the pool than is currently because the screening that we removed was in this area here. Because this, there was a garage in the basement of this, this end of the building, we are closing that off with removing of this parking, as well as removal of those driveway connections through here, the cooking hatchway, and just using an existing driveway connection through the woods. There's a small cottage currently at this corner of the property. We'll add a three-car garage to that building. The architects have just begun to look at that. We presume it's a prestand building, not attached to the property. But it will solely be a three-car garage and more than function. A few other little things, there's an overlook over the river here, which needs some repair as well as pathways repaired into it and really just landscape cleaning up what belongs to this edge. One of the most important things we're doing as far as restoring this estate feel of the properties is connecting the original, or reconnecting the original Astor driveway, which is this area here. The driver currently ends approximately over here, as well as the Astor Court's driveway ends where this part here. We will remove this portion and just turn it into a park path, probably just two, two paved, you know, small paths with grass in the middle, just to minimize its impact because traffic can easily run follow along the driveway connection. Astor's original driveway actually ran straight through this area here. This is one of the nicest parts of the property connecting the two. We'd rather not give that away to traffic and use that as a pedestrian connection and run the new driveway just to the east of that. With the advantage there also along the driveway, all of the news across the metal through the woods here, which are really below. There's an existing driveway that also runs down through here. We are proposing as part of this, remove that driveway connection. It's a rather steep pitch and the way it turns and are, are dangerous. We would, we are proposing reconstructing, well, it's the original service driveway through the woods and across the stream of this portion, a road that, or that is clearly visible in the woods, was simply just to put a new service drive correctly on that previous sign. Few other changes around the, the house, other than the three appropriate areas that Mark mentioned, the front garden, the rear playhouse and the swimming pool. If you could go back to the next one.
Back to the left?
Yes. Question? Next, please. Up to the, yeah, to the larger full side of the bridge. Yes. There are a number of things, several things that run through each of the properties. One of the biggest ones, and it's really hard to see in this, this kind of fuzzy image, but there are a number of paths through the woods that circle all the way around, tied into each other, sweep around. These are walking, running paths that will really just be a minimal amount of clearing for brush to, to, to put down the woodshed path. But the owners would like to have, you know, as long a running path as possible. I think we've cut them up to about two and a half miles on this currently, that may evolve as we continue to work. There are a number of street crossings with that, just simple, where you were just laid upon the earth, unfinished banks with minimal, minimal support. Probably the, the largest significant thing that crosses into the property is the miniature train that Mark told you about. The earlier, earlier master plan showed the loop here at Astor Court's and running along the existing railroad. This was a true railroad, running, you can see the arch here clearly here, but our property line at that time was here and we did loop it up into the woods through here. We're, we're no longer applying for that loop through the woods because we now have the opportunity to continue that into the Brindle Burke property in several phases. So phase one, we see as the Astor Court's link with small station house and storing just a couple of train cars into it and running up. And there's a junction in this location, the squeeze point to all the properties, that starts to go up into the Brindle Burke area, up to the higher area behind the house, into this loop here. And from that loop over and across up above, this is a kind of fairly steep rock cut in this section here, about twenty feet of, of rock cut. We would go over that with bridges, loop into this small portion of the property on the other side of the, of the rock cut and come back. That's phase one. Phase two would run through the rock cut and come across at this corner of the property here and cross into around the pond and up to the existing boathouse, swing back, return. Phase three runs from that point of the phase two loop and up behind the boathouse into the metal behind the boathouse, loops around and returns. Several small buildings associated with that, a playhouse in the middle of the loop, a ram pass, which is a flat train table to turn train engines on so that they can go stored into an hardship building just off the side. That would be in the middle here. And then they'd be somewhat larger, and we're able to talk about maybe a twenty-by-four shed to store the majority of the train cars. And one last, and this, this was the previous service drive to Tee House property. There is a service, existing service garage in this location. We are proposing a larger garage, build, building five-day garage, built opposite with a, a work yard essentially between the two. We had previously talked to you about that building having an apartment in it. Our clients have since chose, decided that that's making things too complicated over there and they want, but they'll have no, no future interest in finding, so strictly to, to, you know, to be a vehicle garage.
Underground utilities are, all the way from, new underground utilities all the way from River Road, below the old access road. And as I mentioned before, that square that goes north to Ferncliff, that'll be underground. And then all the underground utilities will continue along the service drive that Howard just mentioned and then cross under or above the existing stream and then connect, and then connect into Astor Court's. There'll also be telecommunications that will be associated with that that'll go to Tee House.
Among the other ones.
You have any questions?
Questions? Please. So the main drive now is going to be between, it's Tee House lane?
Well, we, we have two, we have two, two driveways. And that each is, is, because we have.
Which driveways?
Three houses. You know, it's really not known yet what the convenience factor is of getting in from one to, to another. Clearly getting to the Tee House along Tee House Lane makes some sense, but we don't really know if that, if that's really working for, for, for the Astor Court's house. For guests, most likely, but the owners may well, for the, the residents of the house, they will be coming in along the service drive because the convenience of parking at the rear of the building is much better than parking at the front of that building.
But it would be the service drive eliminating the part that's the present drive now that goes up there?
Uh, yes, yes, because this.
Go to the east of the house.
Right, right, so they'll be using this service drive instead through the woods.
Okay, and all that fencing that's around the tee house or is that gone?
Gone.
Okay. And also, this is, I mean, these are three different ownerships?
Yes.
And so, but they're all agreeing to this master plan? What if one of them disagrees in the future?
There's, there'll be reciprocal easements for all access.
So there are, there's all these reasons?
Yes, reciprocal easement to maintenance agreements for all three properties.
I, I have a question about phase three of the railroad. As you know, River Road is a state scene of, the views along the River Stone Wall and the views into the woods in Madison, are significantly important, something to be preserved. The railroad going around in the east stretch near is something which doesn't belong there. The phase three, is that up to phase three? Phase one and two look pretty easy, they're back in the property once time, and I can see them into the road. Phase three is something I think they need to get some serious thought to because I do believe that denigrates the view along River Road and you can try to preserve a lot of the developments going on up and down that road over the last ten, twenty years. And I think there's obviously ample opportunity to go for train rides and all phase three. And without a spread, because that really isn't one of the beautiful views along River Road, isn't it, that metal area? And seeing railroad tracks and whatnot does not add to, I think it degrades that view. And I think, my own view is that I would not like to see that there.
Okay. I'd just like to concur with Michael on that and say, not only does it change the views, I think that can get changes dramatically with the character of the neighborhood in terms of what you're seeing, not just view shed, but I, I would wonder about noise, I would wonder about just the impact it would have in that landmark district. I think it's kind of, it's hard to say, a bridge too far. I, I really do. I think it's just too much, too much right out there on the scenic road and maybe scaling it back to phases one and two, because I said I think phase three is just a bridge too far.
There was a reason why it is phase three. It's an anticipation of objection. We've been in communication with our clients and they're perfectly comfortable from moving that from, from the front.
I think that's a wise decision.
I would appreciate it.
Okay.
Other questions from members of the board? Members of the public, anything you would like to say? Yes, Susan.
Hi, I'm Susan Poth.
Susan, I have a question. Do you have a problem? Yeah, thank you.
So clearly you're closing off two of the entrances to.
Your mic.
Susan.
Identify yourself.
You're clear, you're closing off two entrances to Brindle Burke, right?
Uh, yes.
So I, I just want to ask you if you have any plans regarding stone wall?
Uh, yes, yes. The, the full plan is to restore the entire length of stone wall properties in your three hundred and that's, that is the Brindle Burke property, the entire length, as well as the visiting, this, this part of the tee house that comes to Astor Court to River Road is a fairly likely amount of the stone.
I'm very happy about that. I tried to restore it, but it's very expensive, I shouldn't go any further. So I think that's one of the problems we have to do between.
Just in terms of that and closing it off, I, I just worry a little bit about emergency vehicle access directly to the Brindle Burke property. I mean, you're changing sort of the immediate access to that.
We are changing the immediate access for it. What you will get with that is slightly wider driveways for, for that. They, you know, they, yes, it will have a, a gate, it is a security gate, but it's come in practice to.
So, so the turning there for large fire trucks and other things?
Well, I'll be taking into consideration and we'll, I think you know, know how the, the.
That was taken care of before you made the application.
Okay.
Did the existing cutout of that wall though, isn't that original with, with, from that, that house?
You can't get a large truck through the Brindle Burke. It's too narrow.
Well, I understand, but that's the original thing, right? That's the historic.
Actually, I think it's an original draw, I believe. So remember that that property didn't look like that and wasn't used by the main house. It was.
I, I can't hear what she's saying.
Uh, yeah, she said it wasn't original, uh, per, per driveway.
And by the way, so is, so is the other one to the pool house.
None of this is on the record because it can't be heard. None of this is on the record, can't be heard.
Go through the microphone and say it again.
Sorry. The two driveways were original. Sorry, the two driveways were original. The pillars that go to the main house were located on the other driveway and I moved them. And the second driveway just was a service road going into the back and just where it ended, there was no building there. And we put a pool house in, and so that driveway was the access to the pool house. And we can't get big trucks down the main driveway easily. So I don't think there's any great cause in closing them up personally, it's probably a good idea.
Thank you. Any other comments this evening, members of the planning board? We'll be continuing the hearing, what goes for you guys?
So where do we stand procedurally?
What we're going to do is we're going to have a NOI tonight, notice of intent. And by our next meeting, July fifteenth, we should be named lead agencies, we continue the secret process, we continue the review process. Is there anything, if that was for you?
So with the NOI, so, so we need to distribute, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and so Gretchen, I, I spoke to Gretchen earlier, there were multiple agencies or, you know, involved or interested to distribute, so if we could get that.
We're going to do that tonight.
Great, okay.
And I meant fifteen books, you come back?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I guess the first thing I'd like to do is ask for this motion, do the two public hearing to July fifteenth at seven?
Thirty.
Seven thirty?
The move.
Second?
Second.
Call in favor? And I have another resolution here. The town planning board, in consideration of the Mark Krennicke, two thousand nineteen application submission, you've been Mark R. Bruminski, LSPC, on behalf of T-Corp LLC, KPH Two Management LLC, Brindle Valley LLC, and Ferencif Nursing Home. Master plan application for site plan review and approval request for master plan endorsement hereby accepts for purposes of review and initiation of a secret compliance process and application entitled T-Corp, KPH Two, Brindle Valley, and Ferencif Nursing Home. Master plan application for site plan review and approval request for master plan endorsement dated March twenty, two thousand nineteen. Providing for a four-phase development program which incorporates specific buildings and site improvements for each phase of problems of one nine five, one eight nine, and one six seven six eight River Road and two one three three Ferencif Drive, Bryant, New York. One, determines the implementation of proposed development program to require permits, approvals, compliance determinations, and other authorizations from a number of town, county, and state agencies, including the issuance of special use permits, grants of site plan approval, and other authorizations and compliance determinations by the town planning board. In consideration of its permitting and approval responsibilities and added communication of each phase of proposed development program, determines the planning board to have the broadest permitting and approving responsibility as T-Corp, KPH Two, Brindle Valley, and Ferencif Nursing Home pursues implementation of the proposed development program and thus declares its intent to serve as secret lead agency for the work made environmental quality review. Its intended role as secret lead agency classifies the proposed actions, and according to Article Eight, DLC, and twenty-six, Part Six One, seven point four, NYCRR. In its intended role as secret lead agency, further directs the planning board for, with the assistance of the town planning consultant Project Andy Lear, to distribute or otherwise cause distribution of the next notice of intent to serve as lead agency under secret request for comments to which its potential involved and/or interested agencies and persons set forth on the distribution of this set forth therein with pertinent accompanying documents relied as noted. Could I remotion approve?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Michael, just note that, I'll get that information from Gretchen too. I'll do all the distributions, because, you know, make finders for everything.
Thank you.
And provide receipts, so the town knows that, you know, FedEx amounts, and then.
Much appreciated.
We'll have a great time.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
I guess we'll see you guys on the fifteenth.
Yes.
Oh, oh, lady brought up a good point, a field visit?
Ah.
Field trip.
Who? Who would like to go, Eric? Who would like to join Eric?
Is this, being a project that we should be scheduling the entire board to go over a couple of our sides?
Well, actually, the whole board can go once as long as we don't discuss. We could all, to take them up. We could certainly do that, I think what you need to do is circulate a time and everyone can go up.
Yeah, I know, because the CAD's been contacting me, and they also want to be included.
And I know that Melanie and I and Jim went up with you.
Right.
A month or two ago, and saw the treehouse, which I don't know if that was mentioned in the last event.
Oh, it's, he just brought it up, I've been trying to, I've been working with that on, on that, on that solution.
So, I mean, we ended up there, we went through the whole thing, and that was very helpful, but other members, now I feel a great need myself to go back to see it again. But I think it'd be good, Eric, I know would like to go, Edna, would you?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, it's, we've gone through so much, I think I would almost like a methodical list, you know, a plan on what the site visit is going to cover.
Oh, I think that.
Okay.
I think Mark would do that together.
You can do that.
The other thing we talked about previously, and I haven't seen it come back, was a sort of comprehensive inventory of all three parcels and the various accessory dwelling units within each parcel, and I believe you guys committed to preparing that?
Yes.
Is that ongoing?
Yes.
When might we see that? Are they not stated?
Yes.
Okay. In advance of the next, of the next meeting, that would be great, thank you.
So I know that Edna and Eric would like to go, if anyone else would like to go, probably coordinate with you and with Mark. Or the CAD would like to go coordinate with the CAD, probably get the information to Gretchen because Gretchen has sort of been making sure that the CAD, everyone's aware of it. She puts out a notice to everybody about who's doing it and where, how to get ahold of them, I think that's maybe the best way to do it.
Only if I can go.
Now, Gretchen will be going this time, taking notes and bringing the information.
Make sure to read them.
I'll, I'll also just note that, you know, witness change, I'm going to make, you know, some changes to the EAF. Like the original EAF, for example, included the pond, so I'm going to modify that. And then, also, also with regard to some work that I'm doing with the health department, I'm going to modify the EAF relative to wastewater flows on the property. And anything, and obviously with the, there's been a revision to the, you know, alignment for the railroad, so there's more site disturbance associated with that. That'll also be reflected on the, on the EAF, so I wanted to get through this meeting, I'll make those changes, and those would be included as part of the distribution.
And at that time, you could inform, inform us about the fate of Phase Three of the railroad.
I've assumed that, it's off, it's off.
I consider us so, so, thank you.
Mark, real quick, is there any, any planned demolitions on any of the properties?
Demolition of the buildings, you mean?
Yeah, of any existing buildings.
No, no.
No, okay.
Everything's renovation or restoration.
Great, thank you.
All right. We'll see on the fifteenth, if you guys would give us a call, coordinate, and a couple of, if you may, I can warn you too, so.
Okay, fine, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have another public hearing, one more, Michael West, five nine five, zero, minus subdivision, not mine adjustment.
Well, as I told you before when I was here, my ultimate goal is to build an accessory structure up behind my house. And although I have almost four acres, it's all kind of unbuildable land. And the one area where I could build something would be very visible from the road, very visible from my neighbors. So the ideal place to build my barn-like structure is actually up behind my house, and I didn't own that land. So my neighbor, who has an eighteen acre farm behind there, that she doesn't really farm, it's the old gala farm. Because of the stream and this and that, she has no access to the land anyway, so it's useless to her. She was kind enough to sell me point five five acres of land, which is that trapezoidal piece of land that's just, well, it's easier in the lower, lower drawing where it's larger. It says point five five acres, it's right up behind my house. And it's heavily wooded. The nice thing about it is that I'll just open up what I need to to build the barn, kind of right in the middle of it. It'll still be virtually not visible from Route Three to Way, no matter which direction you come, it's up behind my house in a way you'll never see. And the only neighbor who might be able to see the structure is Bruce Dickter, and he and I've talked it over, we're going to build, we're going to plant some evergreens in between the parcels. So it'll be pretty secluded back up in there. So for tonight, what I'm looking for is the lot line adjustment approval so that I can finalize the purchase of the land. And then I'll come back to you later in the summer with some plans for the building and whatever else you need.
Well, actually, at that point, you'd need the building department to do it, we need to buy a, a building permit.
Right.
And that's up to you.
Who did the site visit?
Edna and I did.
Mm-hmm.
We went out there today and it does look like a good spot up behind this house, it's all, we didn't walk up the mix, it's pretty low wooded and brushy and covered in this tick hague and stuff. We didn't go up into the, the actual brush, but it looks like a really good spot for it. There's one small shed right behind his house, it seems like a take down, let him go see the new one.
So we'll end up with just one accessory structure.
Any questions for members of the planning board? What can the CAD?
I'm just, I'm not, I'm not quite understanding that, you said there's, that little section of land that was pointed to, that's what being out of the worst case? So, oh, here, okay, so it's two different things, so, and here's three, okay, all right, I see, I understand.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Right, you won't even be able to see the continuation of the driveway from the road because it curves. So as it continues up into this additional lot, you won't be able to see that from the road.
So right now, there's a ridge of rock that separates my current parcel from the one that I'm buying. And so there'll be a section that'll have to be removed so that I can continue the driveway into the half an acre. And because of the ridge of rock, the building will actually be built low, about the same level as my house. So it'll be, at least the lower half of the, the building will be mostly obscured even from my house because of that ridge of rock. So nobody, no one's back there.
And you mentioned that you were planning to build an eighteen hundred square foot, three car garage back there, right?
Yeah, actually, you asked for drawings. And you can't, you can't hold me to these because they're just concept drawings for now, but if you're interested in what it might be like, I can pass these out to you.
Sure.
And of course, I'll have fully, if you want to just take one and pass them down.
Thank you.
One thing that you should be aware of, and this, this will take place when you have your completed drawings, and you go to the building department for a building permit.
Yes.
The restriction on total accessory square footage is fifteen hundred.
Yeah, I'll leave it there, yes, for sure. Although, as I said, this is a concept, I could pare it back a little bit. The footprint is going to be, what do I have, there's something like sixteen and change, or seventeen hundred? And then there's just one portion that'll have a second floor. So I figured it out today that what I'm really looking for is about twenty-two hundred square feet with the upstairs. But I could probably pare that back to whatever the zoning board, blah, 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 there.
Did your calculation also include the existing shed?
Sorry?
Your, the calculation for the ZBA would also include the existing shed, I'm just saying.
That's going away.
Well, no, that's going to be eliminated, right.
Okay, so then it would just be this, this total aggregate of accessory structures.
Yes.
Which I think we discussed last.
Mr. West mentioned that the only utility would be electricity, could be no water.
Yeah, I don't need any water in the building, I don't need to go allow and put in a subdick or anything like that, it's just electric.
What is a lift room?
Oh, well, I, I work on old vintage cars, and I would like to use that one section in the back for a lift. So there's a high ceiling back there, so that wouldn't have luck on cars.
How high is the ceiling?
How high is the ceiling? Fifteen feet at that point.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I'm jealous.
I know. God bless.
So it's fifteen feet in that section, but it's, it's lower than others, so there'd be upper storage?
Yes, the car storage area will be about ten or twelve feet ceiling, and then upstairs will be, of course, much lower.
And the, that oval entry area, that'll be all the way up to the pool, right?
Yes.
Interesting design.
Yeah, the upper room in that, in that oval part of the building will be like a music room, my friends who are musicians and I build guitars, which is what the woodworking shop will be for. So I don't need a lot of square footage as a, as a woodworking shop, but yeah, it'll be kind of a music room up in the upper part of that tower.
Can't wait to see how that oval roof is framed.
I'm sorry?
I said, I can't wait to see how that oval roof is framed, that would be fun.
Yeah, I've been working it out on paper, it's going to be a fun thing to do. The, the building is going to be mostly post and beam with cips. And I'm also going to integrate some more modern engineered building materials as well, you know, where I need spans.
Right. But, but where you don't, you just use regular sawn lumber?
Yes, yeah.
Any other questions? Anything from the public? Could I request the votes of the public tonight? Second? Call in favor?
Aye.
I have a resolution. The town planning board asks as follows, we have a case by Michael West, the minor subdivision, not mine adjustment, your town project is one oh one. At five nine five, three oh eight, within the RC five, according to said zoning district. Reprint required classification as a type two seeder, for recorded environmental quality review is included. Based upon review of certain informations, including the course of pen board members and the CAD members on their site visits to project property, finds the proposed work is consistently objected to state in chapter one oh one subdivision plan. Respected the minor subdivision, not mine operation, finds that the proposed action is consistent with town code chapter one oh one subdivision plan, section one oh one dash four point one. Approves the application inclusive of the survey prepared by Robert F. Campbell, LSP, January twenty first, two thousand nineteen. Although the pen board shared stamp and sign a website and site plan upon the applicant satisfaction for low conditions and the requirements of the one hundred, three calendar days of the adoption of this resolution. Standing that the subdivision final plan is a non-jurisdictional subdivision and for filing purposes only, divided Duchess County Clerk's Office. Submission of the website survey map and form and numbers plus title in town code chapter one oh one, section one oh one, dash four point four, except as being modified to lesser number by the chair of consideration of file numbers. And including part four, all required stamped, sealed certification. Submission of the deeds to be filed in Duchess County Clerk's Office. They have any outstanding fees and any principal amounts due to the time of writing related to reviewing processes and applications such as this resolution. In that noted lots or buildings such as being created, the land board deemed not applicable to this application, other than those forbidden to the town land subdivision regulations, upon set aside recreational lands or cashed-in lieu of sand payment to the town's recreation fund. Of those provisions or those provisions to the town zoning code related to affordable housing. We have tendered advice of big one, that within sixty calendar days of stamping by the chair, your proof, final plan must be filed with the Duchess County Clerk's Office. Fair motion board approve?
So would.
Second?
Second.
I'll pull the board, Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melanie? Woody?
Aye.
And I go aye. Well, thank you very much.
So once you get the final plan ready to go, get your I stamp and sign, you are in the position to go file with the county, and then go up, and then we're about to build it.
I'd like to send them instructions first.
What?
Have to send them the approval and the instruction.
All right. You're gonna get the approval and the instructions first.
Okay.
All right. Thanks very much. Good night.
Okay, we have one more update tonight. It is that's it, 18 James Street, site and building.
Great.
Uh, yes, that one.
This laser pointer and that's, we're over there, if you want to use that, a little red dash.
Great.
Hi, my name is John. I am here as the owner and the architect of this proposal. This is the existing house, very, very small, as you can see. My wife and I and my little son, we love it, but he just would like a little bit more room. So we're proposing a very small addition to the back side. You can scroll through the next page. This is what we are proposing currently. This is the house. It's a kind of, it's an L-shaped lot, which is strange because when we first got there, we didn't even realize that this was really part of our property because it was so heavily wooded and really forewarned. So what, what I'm proposing is to replace an existing shed. There's two sheds on the property currently, this one here and this one up the hill. And then on the, on the rear of the house, there was a mudroom that added at some point that has an existing powder room, the laundry area. And I'm proposing a one-story addition off the backside here that is essentially just a large kind of open room for a kitchen. Currently, the kitchen is, is here, and it's very, very small. And what we'd like to do is kind of open up a living room here on this, on this existing house and then have kind of a large kitchen. Not large, it's very small still, it's 15 feet by about 10 feet or 12 feet in the end, but this would kind of allow us a little bit more space. In, in total, we're proposing adding 300 square feet to the house. But as you can see, we're not altering the pervious surface too much. Our proposal, I think, is sensitive to the Rhine Cliff historic district in terms of its massing and scaling, the proportion, the proportion of the roof structure. If you could scroll down to the next page. This is just a drawing with some notes about it. If you could go down to the next page. This is a photo of the house with the, the mudroom on the back, the existing shed, and on the side, you see the shed in the back. The white lines are what I am proposing, which is the, the single room. There's actually gonna be another powder room here, so it's, the, the large room will be on this side. Addition with cathedral kind of ceilings in the back. It will come up to the existing underside of the eaves here. This is kind of a depiction of what I'm proposing. So as you can see, that it does kind of fit with the character of the house, with the character of the town. It's gonna be kind of elaborate siding. What I'm proposing is a, as an entrance way, kind of a rear door, is to use what's traditional lean-to style structure and then enter on the backside of that, so you don't have any doors on the front, which I think is a little bit nicer. And in my, in my drawings, I think that I noted that I'd like to replace the existing asphalt roof and then match with a cedar shingle roof here. I think that that might be reconsidered because I don't think that that's, might not be the best roofing solution. I'd like to talk to a contractor about it. I might propose something for this roof, and it's a little bit more like something you'd see over here, which might be a lead coated copper roof. And then if you can go, maybe go back one page. The only other thing I'd like to make note of is, is this little tiny retaining wall that I want to put in. In this, in the rendered site plan in front of, before this, I'm proposing a little pervious surface patio here, and I just want to kind of put a, a little stacked stone kind of wall along there, which is in keeping with the area, there's an existing stacked stone wall here and also one that kind of runs along the property line.
You mentioned the roof might be lead coated copper?
Well, yeah, I, I'm looking at this roof over here, that.
So you, you're just going for a look, you're not actually talking about real copper and real lead coating, or are you?
Well, I'll have to look into exactly what it is. I thought that that was what that material is called.
I would doubt it, but.
Okay.
It's very expensive and also I don't think we really want.
Okay.
As a finished material with runoff from it.
Right. I think a metal roof is kind of what, what it's like.
Standing sheet metal roof.
Yes.
You've got a standing sheet contracted with Rhine Cliff, it was one of the best in the business.
Oh, really? Okay.
I'll attach to that as well.
So will I. Okay.
You meant there were colors.
It's permanent.
Permanent. Oh, great, okay. Yeah, it seems that silver seems very kind of historic and. Oh, then if you scroll down, I think that I included the elevations of the proposal at the very, at the very end here, so.
Two quick questions.
Yes.
The, the wall you're proposing to build, you had mentioned the wall as the south, I guess stacked stone was there. Are you gonna do something that kind of replicates that, so it kind of looks like it was there?
Exactly, yeah.
And the only I saw that looked like there was a minor inconsistency on the plans, on one sheet, I didn't number it. I looked at a, a stone patio in the back, but all the other ones showed the deck or the wooden.
Right, yeah, so if you can go up to the, the rendered site plan, we can talk about that. So here, yes, here, this is, this is a wood deck that's maybe six inches above grade. And then if you go up to the next page. This is, this is kind of the gravel patio that I was talking about that's gonna be on grade. Currently, there's a gravel drive here, this gravel, it kind of goes around the house. And I was just thinking it'd be nice to put kind of an outdoor kind of eating area here. But this is a wood.
Oh, it goes beyond the.
Yeah, almost like a, like a boardwalk, you know.
It's up beyond the wood, okay.
No, right, right.
Any other questions, come on.
There's no garage.
There's no garage.
So driveway or is it on the street?
Uh, this is the existing driveway here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Push the stamp charge.
Yes, it's very smart. You can see it, you can see it here. It's just a gravel turn, turn.
Still big for a lot.
Yeah, it is, it's perfect for us. We have our own car.
Okay, I have a resolution. County Planning Board asks as follows, the application by Town Council for site plan approval and special use permit at 18 James Street within the United Shoreham County District and the local waterfront foundation area Hudson Bridge Square and Martin District. Accept the application with supporting documents as adequate position in the U R A Planning Board of Advisors and Public. Classifies the proposed action as type 2 under secret for coordinate environmental quality reviews concluded. Secretly, a public hearing on the application for July.
15.
15 at.
6:35.
And directs the court to undertake otherwise cause noticing and voting of importance for the county said quarter of the under Town Code Chapter 155. And planning board members, who would like to go? Melody and.
I'll go.
Sharon.
Will I need to be present?
Oh, you don't have to. You can be invited, any questions, things like that. So they'll coordinate with you.
The site visit?
Yeah, for the site.
Okay.
I can't speak for Sharon, but we've had the previous lady. It's a matter of inconvenience, I don't mind coming out on the weekend.
It's, I, yeah, it's, it's very easy to walk about, everything is, is, there's no fences or gates, but I, we live down in the city, so.
Do you come up every week?
We do.
Well, I, we can coordinate around here, so.
Okay, sure.
It doesn't have to be during the week.
Okay, great.
We are going to refer to the Conservation Advisory Board and to the waterfront consistency review, the waterfront consistency advisory committee for comment concerning the consistency of the L W R P and to Dutchess County Planning. And we're authorizing without prejudice to any information, comp, or comment being presented at the public hearing may arise based on what the both said. Field visit and proposed preparation, working draft of a Google resolution for the board's consideration on July 15th or as maybe later timing. Could I motion to approve?
Come on.
Second? Call in favor?
Aye.
Very good. They'll coordinate with you about the site visit, and you will coordinate with Gretchen about the voting saying and voting and all those things.
Super.
Great. That brings us to the end of tonight's proceedings.
What are you on?
I want to make a motion.
Could I hear a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Very good, the standard adjournment at 8:10.